I'd like to call the October 10th Stonington Board of Education meeting to order. And Ally, could you please say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will start off with board presentations and encore classes with Mr. Smith.
Okay, it's me again. But I brought help tonight. Tonight, we're going to feature some video, audio, and live presentations about our encore classes. I'd like to lead the presentation with a huge thank you to Jen Bausch, who's here tonight, somewhere there she is, as in her curriculum role, playing a major role in helping the teachers develop the course outlines and curriculum for these courses, and did a lot of the legwork for getting tonight's presentation together. So the first thing before I enlist the help of 8th grade science teacher Mrs. Chin, music teacher Mr. Manning, and 7th grade social studies teacher Mr. Flanagan, and perhaps a student or two to help me out with the live part of the presentation, we're going to start with about a three and a half minute video that is going to very quickly move through almost 20 of the encore classes to give you a look at students and teachers in these classes. As a preview guide, I just want to say a couple of things about some of the quick snippets that you'll see so that you'll know what you're seeing. I think it's the second clip features the class called Books and Beyond, which is being taught by our librarian. And as a former high school English teacher, I love this class because one of the problems of being a high school English teacher is you kind of beat the love of reading out of kids by deconstructing literature and kind of, it always bothered me, you know, slogging through some of the literature and then you see the kids reading these 900-page books on their own, you know, rather voraciously. So what's cool about Books and Beyond is that it gives kids a chance to read just for the love of reading, but the other element is a hands-on element where they do this thing called junk journaling about the books they read, where they make these journals out of found items and scraps, and it's almost like a scrapbooking reading journal, and it's really neat. So there's just a quick look at that, so I wanted to emphasize that one. I also wanted to emphasize you'll see some slides of our coding class using the Scratch program. Scratch is a program that was created by MIT to help kids learn how to code, and it's really neat because it's like dragging Lego blocks, and it teaches the basis of computer science and coding. And on the outside of the block that the kids drag and snap together to create a scene and animate a scene on the screen is kind of natural language, and then when they click and flip it up, the actual code language is underneath it so that they can not have to worry about the syntax of the coding while they're building it, but it's still readily available for them. Another class that I'd like to highlight is our Unified Living class. This is kind of an outgrowth of our Unified Programs. It's one of our more popular as far as the number of students in those classes, and it's a great marriage we have always had at the middle school, some life skills education for some of our special ed students as far as cooking, cleaning, laundry, all of those life skills, and to be able to do it with their typical peers. These are skills that all kids need, including mine. I wish they had more. And so you'll see a quick look at that. It's really a very great class. You'll see a quick look at 20th Century Through Sports, which is a great way of taking a look at history with, through the sports lens. You can fill in your Field of Dreams quotes here about America being erased like a blackboard, rebuilt, and erased again. The one constant is baseball. And Mr. Grace does a good job of infusing 20th Century history through the sports angle. The other history class that I love is Mrs. Cassidy's Unraveling History's Mysteries, which is again, it's a social studies class that is so hands-on because we have these kids working with the primary documents and the primary artifacts like the historians who then create the history. So it's kind of like the back office look at a history, making of a history text. And again, it's one of our community partnerships that we work with the aquarium. And the last clip, just so you know what you're seeing, the last clip is Mr. Qualley's International Sports Class, where kids are learning sports games and playing sports games from different regions of the world. The game you'll see them playing is Gaelic football edited out of the contact part of the sport. But it's a weird combination of soccer, rugby. You'll see a kid doing what looks like a volleyball serve, and that's one of the legal passes is this underhand hit. If they kick the ball into the goal, it's three points. If they kick the ball over the goal, it's one point. So that's what you're going to see in this short clip, and then Mrs. Chin will, I'm sorry, Mr. Manning will take over and walk us through some of the music encores. Mrs. Chin will then do some science, and we'll end with Mr. Flanagan and some photography. Steve, if you can roll film. And now, Mr. Manning. Walk through a few of our music encores.
So I brought some interactive stuff, so I'm going to stand over here with this microphone, move it a couple times. So as you can see, I have myself three different music encores, a total of five different music encores at the middle school. But I decided tonight, I just wanted to show you some stuff we're doing in music technology. What I like about music technology in particular is that it's not a performance-based music class. It's a little bit different. It's geared towards music production. The big difference being that when you perform music, you do it in real time, and you have to, we have one chance to get it right. But when you're producing music, you have time to edit and revise. You can work on it and present sort of a polished project. So the example that my students are just starting working on this week that I'll show you is playing the drums. You saw the clip from Music Tech. They don't have drums. They have little keyboards. So I'm going to walk you through this. First, I just gonna, this is like five seconds of a basic rock and roll drum beat, and the idea is, what does it actually take to be able to do this? So rather than teaching all my students all the coordination that goes into that and getting, you know, 17 drum sets, whatever it would take, basically, we're going to take this basic drum beat that we did, and I, we have it presented two different ways so they can see it, and we're going to break it down into three components. Now, doing all three of those things takes time, practice, and skill. But as music producers, what we get to do is just break it apart into just basic components, and one at a time, not so complicated. So we're using this program, it's called the Digital Audio Workstation called BandLab, and we're going to sequence this, and we actually do this with these little MIDI keyboards. So I already did this, so hopefully I click and it opens right, but actually, we already have the tab open, but it's a pretty straightforward process. This is what the workstation looks like. So what we did, and I'll just go through the steps with one of them, is just opened up one of those instruments in different spots and just performed it. I'll do the, I'll redo the bass drum, which if you remember from that little diagram, God, do you remember which piece of bass drum we're on in that beat? It was one and three. So we're just going to do one and three. So if I hit the lowest key on my keyboard, that's my bass drum sound. One, three. I'm done. Pretty straightforward. Now, this is my favorite part. This is the editing and revising part. If I look at that, I wasn't actually super accurate, but using the program, I automatically fixed it, and can now loop it, and we have the whole drum beat sequenced altogether. So students did this yesterday morning, and they're wrapping it up tomorrow. So in one class, we learned how to put together a drum beat without actually having to learn how to play the drums. Not that there's anything wrong with learning to play the drums. And that's all I got. Thank you.
I think the only thing you were missing, I saw in the center of that program was more cowbell. And now, Mrs. Chin.
Hi, everybody. How are you? My name is Mrs. Chin. I teach 8th grade science at Stonington Middle. I am teaching two different encore classes this year. The first semester, I'm teaching a class about biomedical engineering, and this kind of came about because I'm just personally interested in that topic, and I thought it would be a really cool thing to expose the kids to because it's not something that they would typically see at the middle school level. So what we do is we help them to develop things like critical thinking skills and problem-solving skills, things that they're going to need when they go up to the high school for other classes. We teach them all about the engineering design process and how that applies to life and real-life scenarios. We're looking mostly at applications that benefit the human body. And then, we're talking about doing some 3D printing. I know our 3D printer is not up and running right now, but we're trying to sneak one from the high school. Wink, wink. So we're working on that. I'm also going to write a grant to get a new one so that we have it available for all kinds of different things. Most of the stuff we do is going to be project-based learning. They're wrapping up presentations right now, doing a project on a biomedical device or achievement that has benefited humans. So they have to talk about the history of that device, and they have to talk about how that weaves into the engineering design process, what might that person have gone through to design that device? So pacemakers, hearing aids, somebody did braces, anything that benefits the human body. So we're looking at things all the way from prosthetic limbs to nanotechnology, which is really cool, and the kids really like it because it's interesting. We're going to be, next week, starting a project where they're going to be using some tubing and different supplies to make a forearm with a hand, and they're going to have to maneuver the fingers on that hand, which I think is pretty cool. They're excited about that. And then, we're going to move into a project where we design a prosthetic leg sort of thing, and we're going to embed bone fractures in it, and they have to solve the mystery of how to fix the bone fracture. So they're very much looking forward to things that are coming up. I have just one of my favorite pictures of the little robot shaking the person's hand because we all know that, you know, this is the technology that's up and coming, and so they have to be able to know how these two things mesh together just in general. And then, the below picture is actually a 3D-printed spine, and that is something that I hope to do as a kind of a final project for them, is to 3D-print all the vertebrae, mix them up, and then they have to figure out how it gets put back together. And then, hopefully, each person will get to take home a vertebrae from their experience. So that's my, my hope. I just put in a little thing about the engineering design process, but I won't bore you with that. It's just a series of steps about, you know, how this process works and how things get created based on somebody's idea that they might have had at the dinner table one night. These are just some pictures from their presentations that they've been doing. So I just literally went through and cut and pasted things that they were doing. The top left is a project that somebody did on infusion pumps, which is pretty cool. We have a prosthetic arm and how that limb works in the center. The top right is kind of a really old, you know, 1700s type of prosthetic limb that they would have researched about. Bottom left is something called a camera pill, and that is also in the center. It's a little pill that you would swallow, so instead of going through a more invasive kind of endoscopic procedure to stick a big tube down somebody's throat, they would just swallow the little pill, and it records everything along the way, so to speak. So it gives them a good idea, the doctor's a good idea of what's going on without, you know, having the person go through this giant procedure. And then, on the right-hand bottom side, somebody did a project on robotic surgery, which was really cool because that is definitely a big up-and-coming field, maybe some future physicians in our 7th and 8th graders, and so that's giving them a little peek into the future. And then, these two kids did posters instead of a Google Slides presentation, which was perfectly acceptable. I like to give them different options on how they do their projects because not everybody is kind of a cookie cutter or Google Slides person. So these two kids did posters, and one was about artificial tissues and how those are engineered. And then, the bottom right was the prosthetic arm. So very cool projects. 3D printing is a big thing with the kids. They really want to do this. This is like the thing that they're waiting for. There's different types of them. Obviously, there's kind of a little box that contains it, where you can make kind of little things, and then there's bigger sort of open machines that will print bigger things. Those are big student engagement factors, great skills for them to take up to the high school and beyond. It gets them thinking about stuff more, being more creative, and then it helps to also infuse that engineering process into their learning. So it's kind of, you know, everything all in one. My second semester class is a class that is being revamped. I taught a water class last year at Pocatuck, and so we are kind of redesigning it and also partnering up with Mystic Seaport. So we talk about things like how did water come to be on Earth because not everybody knows that? What is water exactly, and where is it found or stored because there's various ways of doing that? How are we going to manage Earth's water resources going forward? How is the water treated? How does it get into our homes and businesses and schools? And then, we look at water crises around the world as well, and we're going to be talking more this year about ocean health, dealing with pollution and plastics. So we have a new exciting partnership with Mystic Seaport, the museum over there, and they're doing, they're going to join us to do a river stewardship program, and we're going to use the Mystic River as their lab, and we're going to be studying the water quality in the Mystic River and marine plastic pollution with taking what they find and connecting it over to the larger issue of ocean health, which is a big issue nowadays. We are also, this whole collaborative partnership also brings in the Williams College Mystic Seaport Maritime Studies Program, which is a big thing to say, and also Project O. So I know we have, I think, three field trips planned for them where they're going to get to go out on the Project O boat. We're going to be doing a lot of water sampling and things like that, so they're going to be connecting all of this back to things that they're doing in the classroom. And that's it.
I want to sign up for Mrs. Chin's class, and maybe I can learn something from Mr. Manning's class too. I wish I was a Stonington School, middle school stingray after seeing that video because I never get to see what's happening in the other classes, and it looks pretty exciting. But now, we're on to photography. So next slide. I'm Tim Flanagan. I teach social studies and photography, 7th grade. I have some 8th graders in photography also, and I have a student with me, a brave student, Emily Obrey, who is one of my photography students. I asked the students to describe our photography class, and these are some of the words that they came up with. Fun was definitely the biggest and most popular word, and I'm having a lot of fun in the class myself. So some of the things that we're covering in the class, the students are learning about shutter speed, about aperture, about f-stops and exposure, how to, we'll get into some editing. We're really trying to train them to develop the eye of a photographer, to see the world differently. And we'll get into telling stories using photos as well. All the pictures you're seeing are student pictures, and now Emily and I are going to read some of the quotes that students have said about the class, so.
The first quote is that I like that we get to go outside and take photos.
I like when we use the cameras and take pictures of things and learn about the settings on the camera to take different pictures.
I like the amount of freedom and how the class is never hectic.
I like that sometimes we can roam around the school, but at the same time, still be working.
I like how it is educational, but has a balance of fun, freedom, and structure.
I like that we're allowed to use real cameras and be independent and creative in this class. I dislike that we don't get to meet every day. This photo, the students did a small project on kind of telling some symbols to represent our new school, and the student who took this photo told me that this represented the bond, the strong bond between students and teachers. And that's it. Thanks.
Any questions for either myself or the experts?
No, but thank you very much. Oh, okay. Jack?
They meet every other day for a semester, for half the year. Hence, I wish they met every day.
And I know that's not grading per se. Is there any, how did that end up in the end?
The encore classes are a graded class. Before I leave, I want to share something with the board outside of my presentation, partly because it's really, really good, and partly because the person it pertains to happens to be here tonight. This morning, I received a letter from the University of Arizona. I'd like to read it to the board. "Mr. Smith, I am pleased to inform you that one of your teachers, Tim Flanagan, authored a lesson that has been selected for publication following the University of Arizona Center for Middle Eastern Studies 16th Lesson Plan Competition. His work is exceptional and reflects well on your school and district. Funded by the Department of Education, the CMES is one of only 14 Title VI National Resource Centers on the Middle East in the United States. Recognizing the need for creative and unique lesson plans related to the Middle East that adhere to high academic standards, we have sponsored a lesson plan competition for the past 15 years. This year's contest was extremely competitive. We received high-quality entries from all over the United States. Mr. Flanagan's lesson was chosen for publication on our website, which will be accessed by thousands of teachers annually. Congratulations again on having such a talented and motivated teacher working for you. Sincerely, Dr. Lisa Adely, Director of Educational Outreach, University of Arizona Center for Middle Eastern Studies." I completely agree with Dr. Adely. We are so fortunate to have someone of Mr. Flanagan's caliber working in our district and doing such great work with students. Thank you, Mr. Flanagan.
Congratulations, Mr. Flanagan. And now, we have State of the District, Dr. Riley.
Congratulations, Tim. Wonderful news. This year represents a milestone for Stonington Public Schools, the opening of the two state-of-the-art elementary schools, consolidation of the middle schools, consignment of the two properties to the, back to the town, relocation of the district office. It really is a time for us to reflect on where we are, where we've been, and where we're going. Over the next few months, we'll share information about academics and programming, staffing and teacher retention, facilities and infrastructure, linking all of these elements to budgeting and the allocation of resources to ensure the district's continued success. So you can see here over the schedule, what I really want to do here is brag a little about the wonderful things that are happening in this, in this district. So we thought we'd take each of these topics, and at each board meeting over the next few months, we'll be sharing some of the highlights of these different, different aspects of our, of our school district. And we're going to click on the link to the report series. What we're going to do after each of these board reports, we're going to put What we're going to do after each of these board reports, we're going to put all this background material on a website that anybody in the community can click on and just find out what's going on with academics or facilities, whatever it is. So we'll be able to access this through our district website. And this is just an example of what will be on the website tomorrow after we have a chance to present it first to the board. The next time, we'll go to the staffing report and the next one after that, facilities. So we're going to be creating a brand-new website information for our community about what we're doing in this school district. So we can go to the next slide. So we have mentioned the academics and programming. Just a couple summaries about where we've been. We have been focused on curriculum development, K through 12, strong core programs in reading and mathematics. We've also emphasized our community partnerships beyond a simple field trip experience. And you'll see that, those themes throughout all the presentations over the next several So first of all, let's look at the elementary level. We have consistent and equitable programming in math, the Eureka Math Program and the Wonders Program. Seven years ago, we had a variety of programs in both language arts and mathematics. And even though individually they may have been fine, students were going from, you know, grade one to two to three, and they might have different math programs, different language arts programs. Working with our teachers, they identified the Eureka and the Wonders Programs that we now have implemented all the way through the district. So we have consistency with very high-quality programs that we didn't have six, seven years ago. We also implemented a full-day kindergarten in 2013. This has resulted in immediate improved student outcomes. Prior to that, we had some students, for a variety of reasons, economic or other, that could not attend a full-day kindergarten. Some students had more preschool than others, and we had a real discrepancy in how students were entering first grade. By providing a full-day kindergarten program for every student, we've really closed that gap. We have equitable access to ed technology for teachers and students. We have the iPod classrooms in grades K-1, one-to-one Chromebooks in grades three to five, and upgraded interactive whiteboards in all classrooms. And as you saw a few minutes ago, 3D printers in other schools. We have supplemental reading programs. One of the leaders in the state with the Wilson Reading Program. And this is a special program. It's really, it's an expensive program, but for those students that need to have intensive reading help, it's really necessary. It really keeps those students that have that need up with the other students. And we have, we've been called on by other districts to help show them how to implement the Wilson Reading Program. We're very, very proud of that. We have continued to review our assessment practices, MobiMax for screening, and the Acadia's Reading and Math for screening to make sure that we're assessing where students are and the needs that they have. We've also invested in personnel to support our curriculum and curriculum and instruction in addition to the interventions for students. In the addition of the after-school clubs and the board members, you do have a list of all the clubs that we're presenting. Some of them, we have government class intervention, CrossFit Kids, Buddy Programs, Fairy Tales, et cetera. We didn't have this number of clubs in the elementary school until this current year. And just a few recognitions. West Vine Street School Principal Alicia Daw is actually in Washington, DC today. She was named the Connecticut Elementary Principal of the Year for this year. Dean's Mill School received a distinction for academic performance in 2018. Dean's Mill School also had the CAS Outstanding Elementary School of the Year in Connecticut in 2016. We implemented a departmentalization in upper grades three and four starting in 2016. So the teacher that has the math background will be teaching more math. The teacher with the language arts background would be teaching the language arts. And that's really made a difference for those students. West Broad Street School a distinction for closing the achievement gap between students in high-needs groups and students not in those groups. And that's really something that we have emphasized. So let's go to the next one, the middle school. You saw the results of the planning for the middle school. You know, I was a middle school teacher myself and a principal, and I always wanted to have that opportunity to do these encore classes. What this district did, if you're not, the way encore came about is we asked teachers, if you could teach anything you want, and you were given all the materials that you wanted, guitars or bells or lab materials, whatever it was, what would you want to teach? So our teachers came up with these amazing ideas. Our students have more opportunities to learn these things, along with, of course, the math and the science and the art and those other things. But these encore classes are simply an amazing opportunity for our students to learn things that other students in the state don't have that same opportunity to learn. We have improved our student growth and percent target achieved in language arts from 39% in 2017, 18 to 48.8%. And the target achieved from 57, I'm sorry, 55 to 66. Mathematics, an increase in student growth rate from 33.8 to 47, and on and on and on. These are, this is what, why we're here, to help our students achieve. And we're certainly making the progress where we should. We implemented over 20 encore classes that you saw this evening. They're very exciting. And I agree with Tim that I'd like to go back to middle school myself and take some of these classes. We've updated health curriculum. We have a second step curriculum established and advisory to promote healthy socio-economic, socio-emotional development. We have new extracurricular offerings and clubs. We have broadcasting clubs, newspaper, video game playing, and other after-school opportunities for our students. We now have equitable access to drama, art, world language, music, and encore classes in those areas. Some recognitions, the Olympics National Banner Award in Unified Sports in 2018. And Duffy Grace was named the CIAC Middle School Unified Sports Coach of the Year in 2019. The middle school is on a great track. And the high school. The high school received recognition, the College Board AP Honor Roll for increased in participation while maintaining high scores. Stonington High School also received the College Board AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award, meaning we have our female students doing really well in the computer science classes. We've had successful implementation of a co-teaching model in core classes that allows for the collapse of the lower-level tracks, which was a NIESC recommendation from 2017. We have the establishment of professional learning communities at the high school. And they're in the middle of developing the high-interest level semester courses in English for students in grades 11 and 12 beginning in 2020. We're a leader in Connecticut for students earning the seal of biliteracy. We're the first school to do that. Steady improvement with SAT scores, expanding internships and community partnerships, such as Electric Boat and Seaport, Stone Acres and others. Our community partnerships and the internships have really taken off. We have an amazing drama club, recognized repeatedly with numerous Halo awards and nominations. An on-track curriculum development as recommended by NIESC, with a 40% of the high school courses written and approved as outlined in the five-year curriculum development plan. We've made amazing progress with the high school, and we're still moving forward. So the implications, we're going to continue to work on the district improvement goals specific to curriculum instruction and assessment, as it has resulted in Stonington Public Schools being a leader in academic performance and growth in southeastern Connecticut. At the last meeting, the board was presented with some stats from our neighboring districts, and you can see how well we're doing. We will continue to refine our practices at using data to reallocate resources to continue improvements in student outcomes and program offerings. As far as student achievement in academics, we're doing an amazing job. I want to thank our teachers, our administrators, and all of our staff for continuing in this effort. Tonight, this is the first of a number of summaries about how well we're doing, where we are in this district, and where we'll be headed. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Riley? Okay. Move on to communications and recognitions. And I'll go first. I usually go last. But I want to say tonight is the last night for Deborah Downey on the Board of Education at our regular meetings. She is stepping off. Her term ends as of November 5th, I think is the day of the election. Deb has served eight years on the board. She's been the liaison to the building committee. She's been chairperson of the Teaching and Learning Committee and an amazing mentor to me and I think to all of us sitting here. I just want to say thank you so much, and we wish you all the best going forward. And come springtime, there will be a new brick in the brick pathway with your name and your service on it. And thank you so much for everything, Deb. Any other recommendations, recognitions or communications? I'm sorry.
Real quick, I attended the Stonington Education Fund meeting on Monday night. And I plan to attend all the meetings this year, and I will report back to the board what I learned. They are planning on having their annual gala sometime in March. Details to come. And that's it. Thank you.
Are there any specific goals this year for SEF, or is that still?
They would like to form a stronger relationship with our administration. I think they really want to make sure they spend their money that they raise in the best way that they can. And so I'm hoping, and they're hoping, I think, that's my perception, that they would like to kind of form a stronger partnership with the administration.
We'll figure out how we can make that work.
I just have two quick recognitions and then a comment on communications. For recognition, I just want to call out that the art department, Sally Monica, Teresa Benello, some of the unified art students and art club students painted the sets for the Salt Marsh Opera that's going in the Kent Auditorium and down at the Cape, and they are beautiful. I was able to go over and check them out on the weekend, and they look great. So we should be really proud that they did that. I also want to say thanks to everyone that came out to the open house for the new elementary schools. We had two open houses, one at West Vine, one at Dean's Mill. It was fabulous. We were really just so proud to show off our beautiful new schools. And I met lots of neighbors and alumni going back many years that were excited to come and look at the schools. And I hope everyone who wants to have a chance to will get to do that in the future as well. Then I wanted to make a comment on some communications that we saw this month. Trying to write down some notes. One of the things that I have communicated to the board is a suggestion that we try to instill community service in our district. It shouldn't just be a box that students check off as part of a high school requirement. It should be part of the fabric of our schools and our district. And along those lines, I was a bit discouraged to discover this month that we do not have any policies or mechanisms to support or allow certain exemptions for active military families in our district. We had some communications associated with this issue, and ultimately, I learned that the district is not able to help out a military family because we don't have policies in place. Military families make a lot of sacrifices. I know that for a fact. And they're an important support system for military personnel who are putting their lives on the line for our country. Service to our country requires deployments and multiple relocations. Transitions associated with these moves can be very difficult, and the children often fall behind because of curriculum differences and the stress of moving to new schools. I think we need to look at our policies so that in the future, we can be supportive, recognize these sacrifices, and consider special geographical exceptions for active military. Thank you.
Any other recognitions or communications?
I got to attend the Dean's Mill ribbon-cutting ceremony, and that was really exciting. I just wanted, I know they're not here tonight, but First Selectman Rob Simmons, his remarks were really, I think that he complimented the board well nicely, which is sometimes not obvious, not from Rob. And I also, I know he's finishing his term at the end, at the beginning of November. And I know June Strunk, the Chair of the Board of Finance, is finishing her term. And both have been really great supporters of the Board of Education. I think they've been good partners. And I just appreciate their service and their support. Thanks.
Well said. Do we have any comments from citizens? No comments from citizens. We'll go on to the consent agenda, which we do need a motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor? So moved. And we have a first read on a curriculum for physical sciences. Did anyone have a chance to look at that? And are there any questions at this time?
I have one question. I'm just curious why there's a requirement to have biology make physics course. I'm not saying there shouldn't be. I just was curious why that.
Biology is prerequisite for physics.
It's just time. Biology is a ninth-grade course, and physical science is tenth grade. It's just.
So isn't it curriculum?
If there was something like, if it weren't to pass biology, they're certainly going to go to physical science in sophomore year. We could talk and see if it's necessary as a prerequisite.
So it's more because of timing?
Yeah. Those are the two foundational science courses that get students ready for everything else after that, whether it be chemistry, physics, or environmental science. Those are the two that we have set. Thank you.
There's no other questions at this time. We will have a second read at the November meeting. And if there's any questions that come up in the interim, please feel free to present those questions so we can get those answered ahead of time. And we also have a second read on curriculum. Algebra I, Beginning Guitar, Social Studies, K through 7, and Health, 6 through 8. Were there any questions on any of those? Do we have to, I'm sorry, I don't remember. We do them each individually, correct? Not as group? Oh, we could? Okay. So we could have a motion to approve A through D, if that's your pleasure?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we have a bunch of new curriculums. Thank you for everyone who worked on those. Next on the agenda is discussion approval for the increase of substitute teacher rate.
Yes. Yes, I've given you a comparison of what we pay our substitute teachers and a few of our neighbors. We're having increased difficulty in filling teacher substitutes, and I believe by going up to the $100 per day level, we'll be at the middle or at the top of some, and we'll be able to provide quality substitute teachers when the need arises.
Can I have questions for Dr. Riley, or some opinions on increasing the salary rate for substitute teachers?
I looked at what the other districts are paying their substitute teachers, and I think we should do the increase.
Since it is for approval, do we need a kind of a motion to approve the increase in salary rate?
I make a motion to increase the salary rate for substitute teachers.
To, to 100?
To 100.
Per day? Effective October 18th?
Yes.
All in favor? So moved. And you'll see on the agenda that we have an action that has come back to us for this meeting to relinquish control of the administrative office building at Old Mystic. We had a delay in getting that as clean as we would like it to be. The, there was a lot more shredding, and the shredding vehicle that was there at the time could not handle the amount that was there. So in essence, the shredding truck needs to come back in October 24th to finish the job, and once that happens, we'll be able to completely finish cleaning out the old administrative office, and then we can have that building ready for handing over to the town on November 1st. So we do have a motion that we need made that we will relinquish the building over to the town November 1st. Do we have the reading for the motion, Dr. Riley?
Do you have it?
Oh, you have it? I think everybody has.
Motion shows that effective November 1st, 2019, selling of 4000 property located at 49 North St. We'll open this together. I now must give the construction office away, including land, grounds, buildings, facilities, structures, and improvements there on the town. I've got the option of controlling property. Shall we work back to the town's location and establish a possible agreement in this consideration?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And this way, November 1st, we will have it ready as we should and as we would like it to be to hand it over. Thank you. And now we have report of the superintendent of schools.
Yes, a couple items. We are moving forward with the childcare program for our staff members. We will be sending a survey out in the next couple days, asking for who would be interested if we could get the program going around February 1st. We think it's going to be, it's a no-cost program to the district, but it would save staff members up to 50% of the cost of a commercial private childcare program. So if you hear that we're studying, we're continuing to talk about it, or there was a survey, that's true. We're excited about that. It's something we can do for our employees that would really help financially and quality of childcare and would not be a burden on the taxpayers. So just wanted you to be aware of that. The triple E mosquito issue, we're moving to have our fields vacated by 5:00 p.m. starting next week. We're really not encouraged that this is going to go away anytime soon. We hear from Ledge Light that we need to have, Mark was telling me, we need to have two days of 28 degree for two hours, and we don't see that in the weather forecast coming up. So we will continue to do this. I've notified Recreation Department. They're going to follow our lead on this, but we're going to have all of our players and all of our coaches, et cetera, off the fields by 5:00 p.m. starting Monday. I would also like to let the board know that we, as you know, part of our hope for our new district office is to have the board meeting room, actually, community meeting room, ready to go as soon as possible. We were asked by the Drama Department if we could accelerate that, because at the next board meeting in November, they'll be practicing their musical, and it will be noisy. So, what's it? Oh, that is, that's opening night, so we'll have to miss opening night, but we will have the November board meeting at the new district office. And I would just like, like, you know, we've spent a lot of time in the last few days. I appreciate Chris's work on this one and the principles. We had some issues with getting the school messenger, getting the database from Power School to work correctly with school messenger. It's not our fault. It has to do with upgrades to Power School. We do have some parents who even in October have not gone through the reregistration process. So we have the Power School information for students from last year, but we need them to go in to make sure we have the right phone numbers, that kind of thing. We'll be notifying parents who have not gone through that process yet that if, because the Power School feeds into the school messenger, so by next Friday, a week from tomorrow, we have to roll this over. So if a parent has not gone through that process, their student was here last year, and they have not gone into reregistration, they will not be included on school messenger. And school messengers, when you get all the information about the snow days and the minimum days, all of those, very important messages. If there's an emergency at a school, we want people to know about it. So we're going to send some emails and phone messages out in the next few days, and this is only for the parents who have not gone through that process, encouraging them to do that. So if you, didn't want you to be at the Big Y and have somebody come up and ask you why they're getting all these messages, we just need parents to go back to you and make sure that, you know, the emergency contacts, that everything is up to date. And that's my report.
And coincidentally, it is also 8 o'clock, so we will be signing people's, students' papers at this time.
So I have to know, when is this taping going to occur?
I am pushing for the Friday of Spirit Day, like the Friday right before homecoming. So homecoming, November 11th, so it'll be there. Right? Don't you think that'd be a fun way to end?
Absolutely. You could tell everybody, the superintendent will put in the first $10. How's that? Because he's just, he's going nuts about this.
Well, I brought it up to him the other day, and he was like, come back to me tomorrow. Come back to me tomorrow.
He really, well, we went to dinner before this. He brought it up, and we were all...
What did he say about it?
He's okay with it. He won't tell you.
Oh, my gosh. Every time I talk to him about it, he's so...
See, if I put money in it, he's going to have to do it, right?
I know, he has to.
I think it's hilarious.
He would go right up there, underneath there, right next to the choices.
Oh, my God, that's great.
So like a really...
That's coming up soon then. That'd be fun. So this money goes like for what?
It would just go, it would probably go towards the homecoming money that we raise, distributed amongst the classes. So we deal with some of the money that we raise from homecoming is distributed to each class, depending on like, participation.
Does it go to like grad party next year, that kind of thing?
Yeah, stuff along those lines. Just a donation. But that's what it'll probably go towards unless we decide it's a dedicated case.
Cool.
So dedicated. Next is monthly reports. Does anybody have any questions on those reports? Moving on to committee reports. One that is on here is the Health Reserve Committee draft minutes. The Health Reserve Committee, we are getting closer. Mr. Simmons did receive information back from the town attorney, and they are working up on that draft, which we should be hearing from him very soon in order to be able to review that. Are there any other committees that anybody would like to update? Building Committee? There's a few things.
Few things, but actually not as many. They're working along the punch lists. Building Committee and the administration did a walkthrough of both buildings and came up with what is hopefully kind of a final punch list of things that remain to be completed or need to be repaired. We understand that Gilbane will be out there on the holiday on Monday to get as many of those things done as possible. There are still some ongoing issues with controls and water pressure and water pump, but they are working with the engineers, and many thanks to Peter and Wes for all their time working with the engineers, working with Colliers and Gilbane and DRA to try to get those addressed, and we're hopeful that soon. Those will be taken care of, but they're not there yet. Building Committee is actually going to drop down. I only have meetings once a month instead of two times a month, and I am, even though I won't be the board liaison, I am still staying on the Building Committee till the end, just so you guys know that. So, any questions?
Deb, thank you so much for all the time you put into that committee. We really appreciate that. Do we have any comments from citizens relative to board action on this agenda? Items for future agendas. We do have the meeting, the joint meeting for the Board of Ed and Leadership Team. Were we thinking that we would have CAPE involved in that or something we would orchestrate on our own? I know that last year when we did our annual meeting with Nick from CAPE, he had suggested a meeting where we could do it all, have it together, and he could mediate it. I'd like to know what people are thinking, because if we do want Nick involved, we should probably start thinking of a timeframe and give him a call. So we could maybe think of that for the November meeting, and I can give Nick a call and see what different options are, and we can present that. Okay. Are there any other items for future agenda? Okay. On to board comments and concerns.
I just wanted to say thank you to all of you. It's been eight years with Craig, at least, and it's been actually really rewarding, and I've really enjoyed doing this. You know, I probably won't totally go away, because you know I'm like a huge supporter, especially of the arts, all the arts, and you know, you'll make sure you'll hear from me if there's anything that I feel like saying at a board meeting. And as I said, I'm going to continue to follow with the Building Committee, and I'm happy to, anytime you have questions or want a little blurb, you know, send something along. But I do want to thank you all for the opportunity to do this, and enjoy.
Thank you, Deb. Jack, you had something?
Yeah. Alexa, I have had something that's been on my mind, and I just wanted to kind of vent and share with you my thoughts. As a taxpayer and small business owner, Board of Ed member, and most important, father of three daughters, one who is currently a 10th grader here at the high school, it is important for me, and I want to make sure that students are made to feel comfortable when they are attending a class. And to that end, in meeting this objective, it is important for the Board of Ed and the administration to work together. Our high school, thanks in large part, I believe, to Mr. Fries, Mark Fries, is becoming one of the best premier high schools in our region, and this issue, I believe, is casting a negative light on all the good work that's being done here at this school. I know that we are all waiting for a report back from the state, but truthfully, I don't think any of us know what will be in that report, and quite frankly, I've been told it's probably just going to be a set of recommendations. It is also important for me to know the answer to some very basic questions that I feel could be easily answered, and I would help and would help bring resolution to this matter and bring our community together. I will bring forth some questions to Chairwoman Garvey. Sorry about that. Your name escaped me in the upcoming week, and I thank you for the time.
I'll be available whenever that's ready. Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the board know that we will, the district will be going up to the FOI, an FOI hearing. There's been a lot of discussion about that. We have been challenged by the day, and we'll be going up on October 25th to discuss that. So we'll let you know how that goes.
Are there any other comments or concerns? Can I have a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor? Thank you very much.